I got that apple one. Now it's six thirty.
All right, welcome to the June twenty sixth Planning Commission, Town of Timberland Planning Commission meeting. A call to order here and can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Si.
Here.
Commissioner De Fever.
Here.
Vice Chair Amir.
Here.
And Chair Williams and Chair, Commissioner Woodward are absent.
Great, thank you. So at this point, is there anybody in the audience that wants to talk about something that is not on the agenda? Okay, there is no one. Is there anybody online?
There's nobody from the Zoom audience.
Great, okay, great, thanks. So. I will now go to staff briefing. Has anything staff?
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, great, okay. So the next item is election of chair and vice chair. Given that we are only three today, I would like to propose that we just delay this to next time until we have a full forum.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Okay, so we'll delay this to the next meeting. Okay, so the first item on the public hearing here is fifteen Turtle Rock Court. And could we get a, is there any staff briefing on it?
Yes, Janie Alsef, our planning contract consultant, is going to give us a little brief overview and then I believe the applicant's, applicant's representative is here tonight to give us a short presentation as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Mirror and members of the commission. The item before you this evening is a precise plan amendment of the Perini Phase Two subdivision. The specific lot, Lot nineteen, is located at fifteen Turtle Rock Court. There is a staff report that you've received with details and background regarding the subdivision and the purpose of the proposed amendment is to modify the building envelope. When the, the original Perini subdivision, as with many precise development plans, was adopted, it included an envelope, a building envelope for each of the buildable lots. And again, the purpose of the amendment is to amend the building envelope. You have the exhibits in your staff report and the, the applicant's representative here tonight has provided a PowerPoint which provides a really nice color-coded, embellished version of that site plan. So unless there are any questions or if you would like me to elaborate on anything in the staff report or any, any other questions, I'd like to hand it over to, back to the, the commission and, and available for questions.
Thank you. Commission, any questions before we ask the applicant? Okay, great. So would like to hear the applicant. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Chris Skelton and I'm pleased to appear this evening on behalf of the Bakers, the family that owns the property. Unfortunately, they had travel plans with multiple kids early in the summer and so before this hearing was scheduled, they were already destined to be out of town, but I also wanted to say thank you to staff. Terrific staff report, it really all inclusive and all encompassing. I wanted to just provide a little bit more context to hopefully aid in the decision-making process. And as the staff point, the staff report points out, as part of the municipal code, the planning commission is being asked to give a recommendation to the town council, which is the ultimate decision-making body for this application. So as you see in the red outline here, this is the building envelope that's been defined by the original subdivision, which was adopted around nineteen eighty-eight. The purpose and how this all came about was an investigation about doing site improvements, namely a pool. The owners have three small children and would like the ability to have a pool on site as part of that sort of feasibility assessment. The building envelope became a constraint and there's really no where to locate a pool that would comply. The, the original sort of inquiry is, well, let, can we apply for variance? Just doesn't make sense. The hardship would be self-induced. No genuine findings could be made. And so as we dug into this to see whether or not it's possible, this became sort of a critical path item. And in investigating the property, there's, well, I'll point out in just a minute, there's an area of building area under the envelope, which would have a far greater impact to the neighborhood, to the pattern of development. And so the sort of program behind this application was to derive a net neutral building envelope adjustment so that this property is not trying to achieve something higher or better than what was originally entitled as part of the nineteen eighty-eight subdivision. So this is the shifted envelope here. The other impetus behind this application is frankly to clean up the lot. And I'll show that in a minute, but when we did a more detailed topographic survey, we realized that there are elements on the property that are already non-conforming, which is unfortunate because obviously it's relatively new subdivision and a newer build within the past forty years. So here in red is the highlighted area of sort of development potential. It's closest to the street. It would be most impactful from sort of a view, a view corridor perspective to both the public right of way and to adjoining properties. And Turtle Rock, as it wraps around the corner, really this house is, is sort of nestled down in this sort of gully and the site improvements that are, are contemplated in the future under a, a future design review application, should this permit be approved, would equally be sort of tucked in down below the public credit way. So you can see it's a relatively comparable exchange. Obviously through geometry, we were able to make it a net neutral. There's also a little bit of an adjustment here on the lower portion of the site because of these features that are highlighted. There's a little portion here that clips the edge of the existing envelope that exceeds the, the building and then here and here as well. So part of the programming is not only trying to get a clear path for future site improvements, but also to clean up and correct these non-conforming conditions. And then here's kind of the, the general strategy. In, in the packet, at least a conceptual landscape plan, which was designed by Imprints Landscape Architects, was socialized with the neighborhood. This was last year. We, I, I asked that, you know, we kind of pumped the brakes on that because it was the cart before the horse. You can't get the entitlements for that without first doing this. So you know, conceptually, it's a pool and then updating the patio conditions, which are kind of substandard sloping drainage and other elements like that. And then from just a practical standpoint, by adjusting the building envelope, you're, you know, you're not really increasing development potential here from a amassing or an FAR perspective. You know, with that, I'm happy to stop. There is one element to the staff report and the application that's being presented to you tonight in the resolution. And it is, I'm asking that the commission not adopt condition of approval for. And I, I did share a quick exchange with staff. This was this afternoon, but the condition says no improvements of any type, including fences, temporary or otherwise, shall be permitted outside the bit, the approved building envelope, except driveways, retaining walls associated with driveways of, of which support driveways and decks. This is language that was pulled from the original subdivision in nineteen eighty-eight and it's been reincorporated into the CCNRs, which are essentially private contracts within the, the subdivision among those property owners. The reason why I don't think it's appropriate to have this as a condition of approval for your recommendation to the town council, namely is that it's inconsistent with the standards designed in the municipal code. So it would be a unique condition that's only assigned to this property that would be enforced by the town, whereas every property already has those enforcement rights among themselves. So I don't think it's necessarily fair or appropriate for the town to step in and, and take it on a, a case-by-case basis. And my, my example is that, you know, the, in the municipal code allows for structures, you know, at or below forty-two inches in height. But here it would be absolutely none, except associated with the driveway. I already shared with you that the CCNRs already have this language and it's a private contract that is among the, the subdivision property owners. And the town frankly, from a policy perspective, does not step in and, and enforce those. And nor do I think that the town probably wants to. And then finally, it goes to the consistency of the pattern of development. I'm not trying to, you know, call any properties out, so I, I kept these pretty zoomed in, but I wanted to just give you examples of development in the, in the subdivision that clearly these elements are outside the building envelope. They are, you know, struck improvements and and so there's a variety of different features that are totally fine. They've been there a long time. No one has any issue with them. None of the neighbors are upset about them. And they are just kind of part of the beautification of this neighborhood that have evolved, I think somewhat organically over time. And, and so for that reason, you know, we're asking that this application not be treated any differently than these other circumstances. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, hopefully it's a clean and clear application.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions to the applicant?
I have a cou- I have a couple of questions. So I, I think that what you're asking for is just to move around where the, the square footage is for purposes of the building envelope, but what about those areas of the property? I think it's the sport court. It's part of the lawn currently that I think are outs, currently outside of the building envelope. What's, what's to happen to those areas?
Yeah, there's a condition of approval, I think, in your resolution, giving a recommendation to the town council. And I believe the condition of approval with regards to the sports court is that it needs to be removed from parcel B and relocated exclusively to the private property. We had worked with staff, we've been working with staff for an extended period of time, no problem with that. And unfortunately, it was an inherited condition, certainly not through any wrongdoing of the current owner. And will definitely be sort of folded into any future building permit or design review applications.
Yeah, it would be important to me that anything that is currently non-conforming would have to be conformed if things were to be moved around. The other question I have is, what is the, and, and staff may be in a later position to answer this, what is the opinion of the two neighbors that are nearby? So eleven Turtle Rock. What is that? Probably seventeen Turtle Rock. I'm less concerned with the folks who are at twelve Turtle Rock only because there is such a higher elevation. I don't know. They're, they're the folks across the street.
Yeah.
I don't know that they would have an opinion frankly, as to that kind of, that sloping area down, but I, I do think that the folks at seventeen and eleven might have an opinion. I'm just curious. And, and that's the two neighbors on either side.
Yeah, there's letters, there's a letter in the packet. There, yeah.
And number seventeen, sorry, I have to pull up the map. I'm.
Yeah, there's one from number seven, but you're saying there's also one from seven, seventeen.
Eleven's the first one. I don't see seventeen.
The, the plans, well, there was never a, a formal application, so it, there wasn't a public notice or anything like that, but the owners had socialized within the cul-de-sac. I think there should be four, at least four or five letters. We, I, I corresponded with, I apologize, I can't remember the address, but I did share these plans with, with one other neighbor who reached out in connection with this hearing, gave, gave them all the information, did not hear any, any objections.
Is, is that the neighbor that is, that is most closely next to your client, the one that's contiguous right next door?
I think so.
Okay.
I.
That'd be eleven, I think.
Yeah, there is eleven in the packet.
Okay.
So I'm curious, and, and again, staff can address this later if it makes more sense as to why this wouldn't have gone through a, a notice process.
To clarify, this hearing was noticed. I think he's referring to just design review.
Social, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, pardon me. So the conceptual landscape plans that sort of spurred this with the, the idea of potentially installing a pool, that was socialized informally wi- within the neighborhood to get, get a temperature of neighbors tolerance for, you know, improvements. When that was being prepared for a formal design review application was when frankly I said, hey, I think this is premature. You're probably going to get denied because staff can't support an approval to exceed the building envelope.
Right, okay. So you have not been before design review yet. I, I understand. I think that was the right call. Yeah, yeah. My last question is, and again, this might be something better for staff to answer is, because I immediately thought of variance as well, but you made reference somewhat casually that variance wasn't the right answer. Do you, why is that? Why?
I mean, a variance has to be a hardship. And while certainly, I think, you know, this, these owners inherited this, this condition, like the desire to install the pool per, per, you know, their preference would be a self-induced hardship. And I mean, I don't know, maybe it's six of one, half a dozen another, but I think this is a cleaner, more elegant solution. And then when we also identified other like non-conforming features, it just, I, I believe and I think, you know, many, many folks that I, I work with also subscribe to, like, let's leave it better than it was. Right? And so we're not trying to pawn this off onto somebody else ten, fifteen, twenty years down the roads that they have to regurgitate the history from the eighties as well. We'd rather get it clean and correct now. And it also just helps set, you know, reasonable, manageable expectations in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner De Fever, do you have any questions?
I forgot what my question was because Commissioner Si's questions were so thought-provoking. I was wondering about the setback from the open space. I understand with your new envelope, you get much closer to the open space, at least at one spot, because I, I understand it's a triangle, so there's one closest mark and then it's much further away. I'm trying to get a concept of what that looks like maybe for the neighbors.
Yeah.
I, I understand that's a drainage culvert or?
Um, so the, I guess technically the closest point is, I think, just under ten feet. And, and then it sort of saw to its way back. The staff report, I believe, identifies that from the closest adjoining property line opposite of parcel B would be approximately fifty feet. So it's still, I would say significantly in excess of what was originally, what, what current standards may require or what may have otherwise been originally contemplated. The way it sort of functions back there is yes, during the winter, it is, it is a drainage swale, no culvert. It is a, a surface drainage condition, but it's, I mean, it's kind of like, it's just a, it's an open sort of grassy area. Native, native plants, mostly grasses, some little rock outproppings. It's, it's kind of a nice casual environment.
And it's really sloped?
Um, the steep, the, topographically, the steepest portion is right up against Turtle Rock roadway. So from there, it's, it's, it's very sloped, but then after you get about twenty, thirty feet from the roadway, it really tapers off and is a, a pretty gradual downhill.
And so if I'm looking at your, your plans here up on the screen, the property directly across from where the new building envelope would most closely approach, what, what are the addresses of those properties? Directly across from it?
Twenty-three and twenty-five. I can just interject.
That's what I.
I have it pulled up on, yeah.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify that and I did notice that those were addresses that had written in support. So that's, that's very helpful.
And frankly, they, I mean, I, I felt like they're, they're probably the most visually impacted. While certainly there are properties that are physically closer because of the dynamic of the topography, like the other ones are kind of tucked away. So, yeah, and there's been o- open dialogue for a while with those folks.
Okay, thank you for that. I always want to confirm and that helps me get a, an image. Thank you.
Okay, thank you applicant. I will now see if there's anybody in the audience or online that would like to address commission. I don't see anybody in person and.
There's no comments from the.
There's no comments online. Okay, so with that, I'll close the session and bring it back to the commission. I have a question, sorry, I have a question to, just in terms of what the applicant talked about here with regards to the conditions of approval on number four. So can, can we just get the staff opinion on this request?
So I'll start out, but then we'll, we'll, we'll turn it over to the town attorney as well to get her input. The, my understanding anyway is that the precise development plan, even though it's being amended for the building envelope, all of the other provisions would still apply. And the condition number four simply reiterates one of the conditions in the precise development plan that, that isn't going away. It was merely to reiterate that these, all of the conditions of approval apply, even though you're getting this building envelope amendment. And condition four is the condition that Mr. Skelton referenced, that he is requesting that it be removed for the reasons that he stated.
So, so just to understand, so it's, so in a way it's a duplication that, so, so, so the staff think that it's necessary or it's not necessary? That, that's what I'm trying to understand. I mean, I understand what the applicant is saying, but I'm just trying to understand what staff.
What does the lawyer think?
For the lawyer.
I would say it's necessary because in this case we're modifying the building envelope. So we're saying that this condition that you can't build more than what we're modifying today still applies. So we are reiterating that. I think the fact that it has come up, but you know, the town needs a way to enforce these conditions and just because they're in the CCNRs doesn't mean that this PDP doesn't apply, like the, the underlying PDP applies, the town needs to enforce these conditions. And if a project came in and they wanted to build something, we would review the conditions in this PDP. So and that's true for every address, you know, in this development. So the PDP still applies. We don't enforce CCNRs. We need to have our own enforcement mechanism. And we're calling out this particular condition because we're modifying the building envelope and this is the condition that's related to the building envelope. And we disagree with the contention that it violates the code. This PDP applies to the projects, to all houses in this development.
Okay, great, thanks. So that was my clarification. Any other questions to staff or should we just bring it back to the three of us to deliberate?
No questions.
Okay, all right. So I'll start with Commissioner Si.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with it. I think that it, it achieves the purposes that's outlined in the draft resolution and I think that based, I had a question as well, Chair, as it relates to the contention pertaining to condition number four, but I'm satisfied with the town attorney's explanation. I think we should include it. I don't see any reason not to, but I'm otherwise satisfied with this.
Okay, Commissioner De Fever?
I feel the same way. I think that I want to thank our planning consultant, Ms. Alsef. Very nice report. It was very clear, very easy to understand. And the resolution is drafted very nicely. Also, my opinion on the element number four, it sounds like it's almost a distinction without a difference because the town can enforce it anyway. It's just, you know, I'm also a lawyer, so I understand sometimes you want to cover all the bases and put it in there anyway, even though maybe technically it doesn't necessarily, I get it. So I would support someone who's more expert in government law because that is not my field and I will agree with the town lawyer on condition number four. And I just want to commend also the presentation from the applicant. Very well done. Thank you very much for answering all our questions. And it does seem like that this enables improvements to the property. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you staff as well for the, for the report and the extra work here. Yeah, I, I also think that, you know, it's a very reasonable request here. The fact that there were plenty of neighbors here in support and many of the neighbors from around sent letters and this was sent out to everybody. So clearly there was an opportunity here for people to, to come. And, and I think it's a minor modification really, keeping the same size, you know, moving it around in order to accommodate the pool. And I'm also satisfied with what the town attorney has said about, about item four. So I think we have an agreement here. So does someone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Second, okay. So the, the motion is basically as written as resolution in the packet. Do I need to read it out or? Or as is, as is, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you applicant. Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to the next item on the agenda. It's forty-nine sixteen Ranch Road. Do we have a staff report?
Okay. Janie Alsef will give us a brief report.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the commission. This item is a tidlin's permit and use permit for a private pier associated with the property at forty-nine sixteen Ranch Road. There is a single-family home that is under construction currently on another parcel, adjoining parcel. And as indicated in the staff report, the, the pier plans were presented to the design review board as part of the larger development proposal for their review and comment and just to offer an opportunity for any insight from, from the board. I think they had their hands full with what was going on with the rest of the project. I don't recall after reviewing the tape that there were any significant issues that came up during the board meeting. The conditions of approval did require approval of a tidlin's permit and a use permit for the pier. There, we do have a PowerPoint. If we think we need to look at the plans, they've all been included in the staff report as an attachment. The pier is subject to review by other agencies and based on my experience with reviewing other private peers in, in, in Richardson Bay, this is exactly the kind of design that the responsible and regulatory agencies look for with the deck being light transparent, not, not creating too much shade. There is no eelgrass present in the vicinity of, of the proposed pier, but keeping the types of materials appropriate and minimized is always a condition of these regulatory agencies. So it looks like they've done everything right in terms of getting these other subsequent approvals that will be required, but the town use permit and tidlin's permit is the first stop for permitting with regard to peers. I don't have any other comments. If you have any specific questions of staff, otherwise I know that the applicant is here and would like to speak.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions to staff before we hear the applicant? Okay, so is the applicant there? Okay, great, thank you.
I'm Jackie Boss. Last time I met you was over Zoom during COVID. Well, I wanted to thank the staff for all of their advice and they're very thorough and helpful. So thank you all, always. There's been a lot of work on our project. And we're building the pier for our family. We have three kids and a husband who loves the water and. Um, and we're building the pier for our family. We have three kids and a husband who loves the water and um, and two dogs. It's it's we're just building it for ourselves and we stuck to um, under a thousand nine ninety feet, under um, a thousand feet because that's what the BCDC likes as their, for their region wide permits. So we, and we had a consulting ecologist who, as Janie pointed out, um, commented actively on what the other agencies would like. That's my.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, any questions? Um, the applicant.
He, I have a couple of questions I may, Mr. Chair. You you were here before us, right? That's, I remember that.
Wait, for the LACCO, um, is that what it was called? Yeah.
Pre-annexation.
What was it in connection with this piece of property to, it was to to transform um?
They were annexing into the town.
That's what it was. Okay. And so this is all part of that same project you're doing. This is just now.
Very slow. Especially with LACCO slowing things, you know, it was another step. Um, and then, you know, even the construction's been slow because of all the weather, there's been weather related, you know, the two big storms. Um, yeah.
And there are a couple of other peers, I think, um, that your neighbors have. A couple of houses down and and one that looks like it used to be.
Yes. Oh, yeah, you can see them. Okay, yeah, there are, there are many peers around the area. And um, a lot of people are kiting and we have the, the Paradise Key is right next to it. So there's a lot of people coming through. And um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Now, and then we we got a neighbor wrote a letter of support and even when this went out the first time, three neighbors commented then it positively.
Okay, Commissioner DeFever?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I did see the, the neighbor who wrote in, it's forty-nine fifty Ranch Road. Do they have a pier as well and how far away are they? I don't know where they are in the map.
They're the, they're the second next neighbor. They're really close actually because the, for some reason, our neighbor has a I think everyone wants the water. So our neighbor has a triangular block and then this is the next neighbor along that wrote this time. And um, they don't have a pier. They have a kind of concrete boat ramp down to the water.
Hmm.
Would they be, if you're facing out toward where you'd like the pier to be, are they on your right or your left?
If you're facing the water, they're two to the left that way.
To the left, okay. I I noticed it looks like there are other peers in that direction.
Yeah, including ones pretty new. Some of them are Marin County still and then.
Okay, thank you. That helps me orient um, who wrote in and kind of put that in context with the photographs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there um, anybody from the audience or anybody online that would like to address the commission on this regard? No one in the audience?
No comments online.
And there's no comment. Okay, so we'll close the session and we um, will bring it back to the commission. Um, so I have a question to staff just to understand um, the the process. So uh, there basically is um, because it's a pier, then there's essentially another approval process that needs to go through the the county, basically, um, or or how does that work?
So um, the pier would be constructed primarily in the marine zone. Uh, that's a, that's both a zoning and a general plan designation. And our own Tiburon uh, municipal code requires a tidlance permit.
Okay.
Um, there is a provision in the tidlance permit section that indicates that any new major construction is also subject to a use permit. So that they kind of tie the two together. If it's a minor, very minor, maybe a repair, it might just need a tidlance permit. Um, so this is annexed into this property, even the water portion is annexed into the town. It's within the town's jurisdiction. I'm not aware of any county permits that would be required, but there would be a permit from DC, BCDC.
Ah, okay.
And that, yeah. It's within the BCDC jurisdictional swath.
Yeah, and this is a threshold issue, I assume.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And and there's two other agencies, USAC.
Right, US Army Corps of Engineers and Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Okay.
Those are the three main ones.
Um, okay, that was my staff question. Any other questions to staff or we'll bring it back to the commission? Okay, we'll bring back the commission. Um, I'll start with uh, this time Commissioner DeFever.
Yep. Um, again, very nice staff report. Thank you very much. Um, I feel like we've definitely covered all of the um, general plan and zoning ordinance, uh, clauses that might be applicable. And I appreciate the detailed work toward, you know, the construction methods, whether or not there's electrical service to the pier and things that uh, takes some thought to think about whether these are compliant factors with our ordinances or not. I don't think I had any um, concerns with anything. Because this is a CUP, I noticed that a couple of the zoning ordinance, ordinance clauses under sixteen dash fifty-two oh four OD are kind of really more tailored for situations uh, for the business district. But you did a very nice job of um, still addressing those clauses uh, efficiently and effectively. So thank you for that. No, I mean, it looks great to me. I don't see any reason not to approve this under the circumstances. And, you know, the applicant definitely has a quite a few more steps before they get to actually building the pier. Uh, so complicated, but I would support, I would support this application.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Desai?
Yeah, I agree. I think that the proposed project fits within um, section sixteen fifty-two dot oh four oh D. Um, it certainly is consistent with what is going on on that side of uh, the K. It's an ambitious undertaking, but um, the applicant has been here before and appears to have the intestinal fortitude to do it. So I I wish you luck.
Yeah, I I agree with my fellow commissioners. It's uh, it's, this is obviously a multi-year project for the applicant to get all this done. And there's more to go, but uh, hopefully um, this is another step in that direction. Um, so yeah, I would, I would support here. I really, really have no, no further comments except what my fellow fellow commissioners have said. Um, so I think uh, we can uh, come to um, an agreement. Um, can I have a motion?
So moved uh, to adopt the resolution as drafted by staff.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the motion passes and thank you uh, for the applicant for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to the uh, last item on the agenda, which is uh, forty-six A uh, main mainstream on a CPU uh, for um, the caviar company. Um, so staff, do we have?
Very quick staff report for you. Um, I don't know if you remember, but um, the the same applicant came before you for the tasting room at the uh, champagne and caviar. Since that time, um, she has been operating the site. It's been hugely successful and came to us to request it, an amendment to use permit to allow her to be a restaurant. Um, so she wouldn't just have prepackaged food. She could actually use the facilities that she has there now to cook food and to be considered a full um, restaurant, which would allow her to have families in there as well. So uh, people would be able to come and have dinner and taste the champagne and not have um, some regulation that doesn't allow children to go in. Um, so most of what you see in the report is um, similar to what you saw previously um, for this same one, as well as um, the only differences we have uh, a request or a requirement that the applicant give us one more um, parking space, which um, she definitely can do through um, uh, the owner of 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 that property. And um, because the the numbers change when you go from restaurant to the bar or tasting room. So it was one more um, seating, the seating required one more space. And um, otherwise, we, we support this. Um, we have worked with um, the caviar company and um, with that, I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. Um, any questions?
I'm curious, why did the parking change? Is there another seat in the restaurant or what's, how does that trigger that?
The restaurant required, has to do with the number of seats and the way the restaurant is written as opposed to previously. As a tasting room slash bar, the restaurant needs additional space, comes out to three point four, three or something like that.
I know. We, we've been through those calculations.
Yeah, so there, there is a requirement for one more space to, which I don't believe in, and the applicants here is a deterrent to moving forward.
And where where is the parking spot? I mean?
It's, it's off-site. So the Bank of America belongs to AC Ventures that actually owns that property.
Okay.
And they provide a lease to um, the business owner. That business owner has to provide us that lease before they begin operating.
Oh.
And and she's done that before.
Okay.
We have that from before.
Okay. All right, um, do we have uh, any applicant presentation?
Hello, uh, good evening commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. And thank you so much for your support and help getting this staff report together as well. Um, yeah, we're just looking to be considered a restaurant as opposed to a bar. We have a lot of families coming in wanting to dine with us and unfortunately we have to turn them away. I think um, as an owner of a caviar company and with children of my own, I think I take responsibility to educate the younger population on caviar and why it's special and how to preserve it. And with sustainability being something really important too, but also just to further education, is that something that's really important with us? But also, as a member of the community myself, I live in Belvedere. I want to be a part of the town and I want to celebrate those milestones with our community. You know, I want to have people celebrating their graduation with us or birthdays or a mother-daughter tea party. Um, I think we can make a lot of memories and contribute to that with families um, in the town. And so that's why we're here today.
Great, thank you. Um, question, so do you need to modify anything in the kitchen or anything? So you don't need to do anything from that perspective?
No, no modifications, thankfully.
Okay, no, that's, that's great.
Uh, I was gonna ask you, I see the hours listed in here. Are the hours of, the opening hours changing or they, that's just listing the old consistent hours?
Uh, so right now we're open from twelve to seven due to staffing shortage. Um, and then we are hoping our summer hours are twelve to eight. Um, and I don't really foresee that changing because we still actually want to be a contribution to the rest of the town. Our goal has been to be that starting place. You know, you come and start with us. You have a little appetizer, maybe champagne toast, and then you go down and have dinner at Bungalow. Or you go and have dinner at Luna Blue. So like, our intention isn't really to necessarily replace the other restaurants on the town, but we want to just allow children and minors in our space.
Right now, children are not allowed because because it's classified as a bar.
Classified as a bar.
Yes, so technically they can dine outside, but they're not allowed to come into the building.
What is your outdoor um, seating dining situation?
We have four tables outside.
Do you have any um, planters separating the the street from the sidewalk?
No, but we hit the thirty-six or twenty-four inch minimum requirement be.
It's a pretty wide berth on your side of the.
Yeah, we're actually, we have so much space. We, we hit the space requirements for the, the road to the chairs and then from the chairs to the building on both sides.
And are you anticipating any changes to the outdoor seating with uh, conversion to it being a restaurant?
No.
Okay.
And and just so you know, that's not part of this application. So the outdoor dining was not considered as part of this application. Because as you might remember, we did have an ordinance that came before you for consideration regarding the outdoor dining. It went to town council and at that time, the town council kind of asked us to do some additional research and further refine it before they would adopt it. So the way we're looking at outdoor dining currently is those outdoor dining spaces remain until such time as we figure out what do we want to do with them? What's the permit process going to be for them? You know, are we going to have any barriers between the street and the tables? Um.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
Not, not only do I remember, that's why I'm asking. Hopefully to contribute to the research.
Yes, my, my research is ongoing, Commissioners I.
Um, so, uh, do you know, what does the current CUP say for the hours? Does it say twelve to nine? We're usually pretty liberal because we allow businesses flexibility to get off the ground and see what they really need. This is really for my informational purposes.
Good question, but I think it was twelve to eight. I think it's an additional hour here as to nine.
So we'd be changing to allow an additional hour.
Yeah, and I think when you're talking about dining, it's probably a different experience than you come in and have a glass of champagne and caviar. So there might be more lengthy seating.
Well, it it's, it's up to the applicant, of course, which, which she would want to ask for. But um, I, I think to the point of the question by Commissioner DeFever, um, we have approved um, CUPs for hours beyond eight o'clock. I think going into nine o'clock, is that, is that right?
Yeah, even more.
Oh, we, we've approved later than that.
Sam's is even more, right?
Yeah, I think I have been pre-approved for that in my last CUP application when we first opened.
We probably had this discussion.
And yes, my hours proposed were twelve to seven and I think by y'all's recommendation, like, you know what? Let's open that up a little bit and push that back a little bit.
Well, it, it did go to eight, didn't it?
I think it, it went to nine.
Okay.
But eight o'clock is a sweet spot for you. That's where you think, okay.
Yeah, we don't really see much, like, the town just gets so quiet too, that with staffing and things like.
It doesn't make sense to give out, understood, understood.
Yeah, and to be clear, I don't have any problem with it being nine. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what I'm approving before I.
Right, you, you're approving the time, the fact that it becomes a restaurant. There's no internal modification. Um, they're going to use the existing microwave toaster. You know, whatever little things that, but um, and anything if they did need to improve or add to it, they would need to go through a building permit and a health department.
So um, given that there are no modifications that you're proposing to the kitchen setup you have, is, is it proposed to be a pretty limited dinner menu then, or is that still under uh, development?
It'll be a limited menu, I would say with um, six offerings. I think our concept is still supposed to as shared bites and plates and caviar flights. And that's where, you know, the caviar education really comes in, so.
But cooked items, I assume, as opposed to just
heated.
Package, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would assume you want to keep caviar the focus.
Yeah.
And not turn into a restaurant that offers caviar. I'm sure that branding wise, it's probably wise.
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, and I don't think they're heating the caviar.
You don't, you don't want that, trust me.
All right, any further questions to the applicant?
I had one more. Um, it was sort of mentioned in here. It's probably not an issue, but I remember in previous planning commission meetings, we always tend to ask about delivery schedules and do you anticipate any increased delivery? More trucks coming to stop at the, at the property uh, for more deliveries, given the, the shift in the, in the license?
No, not at this time. And in the future, actually, we we kind of also piggyback with Salt and Pepper and they take a lot of our produce and oysters um, for us. So we kind of piggyback on with the town.
Oh, it's very neighborly.
That's great.
Yeah.
Mark's nice.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to talk to the commission?
There are no comments from online.
And there's no one in the audience. Okay, so we're closing the session and we're bringing it back to here. Um, any further questions to staff?
My, my only question is why um, this would require a CUP? If there are no actual structural or other changes, is it a condition, is it a, a, a fact of the CUP that because it involves now?
Because it's a restaurant now as opposed to a bar. It requires use permits. The way in which we handle this is, we made it an amendment to the existing.
I see. Okay, all right, thank you. Well, I'm sorry, I do have another question.
Sure, go ahead.
I've done that before, sorry. Um, the, are there any other differences in terms of what's permitted? Once you make that amendment, converting it from a bar to a restaurant that we haven't otherwise discussed?
Not, uh, what are you, what are you thinking?
I'm not thinking of anything. I mean, that's why I ask it as a question. I don't know that.
So it's an established restaurant, so they have their signage, they have their advertising, they have clientele probably. Um, I don't anticipate there being any more impacts as a result or any more changes. I also think it has a lot to do with, and you can stop me if I'm incorrect, but the way in which the ABC views them. Um, when you're looking at a restaurant versus a bar and what they're allowed to do and how they can serve and who can be in the facility. So that's really the reason. So that's really the reasoning for it. But I think the only way in which for us to formalize that was to go through an amendment to the CUP.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so um, I think we're ready to maybe discuss it. Um, Commissioner Si, we'll start with you again.
Yeah, I, I was comfortable with the original application. I think this amendment makes sense. I think it'll amplify what this. Um, establishment's able to do and I think it'll add a nice dimension to that uh, part of Main Street. Um, I also think it's consistent uh, with sixteen fifty-two dot oh four OD. Um, in the uh, factors as laid out in the draft resolution and I'm prepared to support it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner DeFever?
Uh, that is exactly what I was going to say. I think it's in line with the municipal code. I think the resolution is well drafted. These are not major changes. It actually just facilitates um, the applicant. And providing a nice experience for their customers and we support that, because it's good for the town.
Yeah, no, I uh, I agree with my fellow commissioners and, and it's wonderful to see actually a successful business, you know, thriving, expanding. And um, with a, you know, very cool concept, you know? That's not a typical concept, I think, for, for a uh, for a, for a, uh, food uh, business. And now expanding into a restaurant. Um, so I would be supportive as well. Um, so can I get a motion?
Yeah, so moved to adopt the resolution as drafted by staff.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. The uh, resolution passes and thank you, the applicant, and uh, good luck. Um, with that, we have uh, nothing else on the agenda. And uh, it's seven twenty-five and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.